Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Leek, I would like to welcome you to our meeting and call the meeting into order, like to welcome everyone again to the December fourteenth meeting of the city county planning board, would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV thirteen and will be rebroadcast at ten AM Friday morning and again at four PM Sunday afternoon, our first order of business today will be the consent agenda, these are items for which the petitioner is requesting withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval and no one has signed up to speak in opposition, for public hearings today, each side will have a total of twelve minutes, there will be no rebuttal period, once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks them a question, for general use district zoning request, the planning board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district being requested, petitioner may not refer to a specific use for the property, for special use district zoning request however, the petitioner must identify the intended use or uses of the site and give specific details on how the site will be developed, items under section B of the agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the city council or county commissioners, as such, votes taken today by the planning board concerning these items are recommendations that will be considered by the elected bodies during their review of the requests, before addressing the planning board today, if you're speaking, we will need your name, address and zip code for the record, our first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the November ninth meeting, is there a motion?
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous, thank you, now I'm gonna call on Mr. Mark Allred to review the consent agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, first up is the continuances to January eleventh twenty twenty four, items B three and C one requested a continuance of eight days or more prior to the planning board meeting and B six did not get their neighborhood outreach in on time, so these three are being continued to January the eleventh. So your first case up is B one W three one seven three, this is applicant's Southside Associates, the final development plan of two point two acres on the northwest intersection of Peters Creek Parkway and Brewer Road, to the north and west is part of the shopping center that this development is part of, to the east is Parkland High School and to the south is a convenience store. The aerial shows this as already a developed site, it is a, is part of the parking for the shopping center. The area plan has this recommended as commercial. The site plan is a six thousand one hundred and thirty nine square foot site surrounded by a drive through, fuel pumps and parking lot, there are internal connections of sidewalks between the store and Brewer Road, so the main building here to Brewer Road and the main building to the Sheets Convenience Store, plus there's sidewalks along Brewer Road and parts of Peters Creek Parkway, the rest of it will be done fee and loo. So the, this is a overall site, as part of the final development plan conditions, the applicant is improving the current parking area by adding or improving seven planting areas within the rest of the MVSA area, so you kind of see the dark spots there. And this is a, this, this is obviously going to be a sheet, so as you can see here, this is the elevations they, they showed, the request is consistent with the recommendations of the South Suburban Area Plan Update and Legacy twenty thirty, the request meets the requirements of the UDO and applicable phase one conditions of W three one seven three, staff recommends approval.
What's the trigger for the plantings inside the remaining parking lot?
Well, in this case, it was a condition of the rezoning, that was, that was done ten years ago, there are provisions in the ordinance that deal with redevelopment of the shopping center, but there are specific parameters that deal with that, that deals with the actual constructed value of like, you know, demolition and reconstruction of-
It used to be like fifty percent or more.
Correct, and again, what they're doing here doesn't bring it up to full standard, we're allowing them to take that reduction that's associated with that, but again, it's not triggered by this development, it's triggered by the rezoning that was approved ten years ago, there was a specific condition of approval that specified this.
Any other questions for staff? Alright, no one has signed up, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board approve the final development plan of W thirty one seventy three.
Second.
What's wrong?
Yeah, we actually, even though it's a final development plan, we still need the comprehensive plan motion on this because it's still a zoning action, it stops at the planning board, but we still need both motions.
Alright, Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comp plan, comprehensive plan, second of that.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs on both, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Alright, next up is B two.
Other ones, we need to reread it.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board approve the final development plan of W thirty one seventy three, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we go into the next item, the next item is B two and it will have the same thing, it will be a final development plan, but so those motions should be dual as well, sorry.
I apologize, I got excited to go into the next case, next is B two W three one seven four, the applicant is West Point Village Associates, final development plan of one point two acres on the north side of Glen High Road between Glen Center Drive and Union Cross Road, so to the north and west is part of the development, right now it's still vacant lots, to the east is Sheets, to the south is Glen High School. This is B two, in the aerial, you can see the site has been cleared and graded for development, the area plan has this as commercial, the site plan has a nine thousand nine hundred eighty four square foot retail store with parking to the south and west, loading unloading to the north and sidewalk connections to Glen High Road from here and Glen Center Drive from here, along with sidewalks along Glen Center Drive and all of Glen High Road, that's abuts this site. This request, this final development plan does require the develop, the building to be mostly brick, which the applicant has proposed, as you can see in front of you, the request is consistent with the recommendations of the southeast Forsyth County Area Plan and Legacy, the request meets the requirements of the UDO and the plant, phase one conditions of F fourteen thirty four, staff recommends approval.
Any questions for staff? No one has signed up, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board approve the final development plan of W thirty one seventy four, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
The next case is B four W three six zero four, the applicant is Green Tree Real Estate LLC, this is a limited industrial to pedestrian business rezoning, zero point six one acres on the south side of Shalford Street between South Broad Street and Brookstown Avenue, location map has non-residential buildings to the north and the east, there is a residential building to the west, plus on the southwest, this is vacant land and part of the US four twenty one right of way. And you can see from the aerial, this site currently has a six thousand two hundred and twenty square foot building with parking, so it's already developed site. The area plan recommends mixed use development, the request is consistent with the recommendations of the downtown Winston Salem Plan and Legacy, the proposed district is compatible with the surrounding land use patterns and provides an opportunity to redevelop an older existing industrial site in GMA two, for these reasons, staff does recommend approval.
Any questions for staff? No one has signed up, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the motion of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W thirty six oh four, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous, recognized councilman Principio, just saw you walk in, it's good seeing you, happy holidays to you as well.
Next up, so B five W three six oh five does have opposition, so this will be taken off consent. The next case is B seven F sixteen thirty five, the applicant is Kate Six Holdings LLC, this is rezoning from agricultural to limited industrial limited use of ten point oh one acres on the north side of sixty six south between Creekwood Forest Drive and Moore Farm Drive, you can see from the location map, you got agriculture surrounding you to the west and a north and single family residential to the east, you do have a limited industrial limited use down here to the south, limited business in north, and the city of High Point has a, an industry here that I'll talk about in the aerial. So here's the aerial, the aerial shows a vacant building with that, used to be a former nursing care facility, the property is located within the Abbott's Creek watershed, which imposes restrictions limiting to about twenty four percent of the impervious surface of the site, so twenty four percent is about the area that you see here, that's the non-wooded area, so it's kind of, think, think how, how much of this site can be developed. The large building you see to the southeast is the NC sixty six Polo Ralph Lauren Distribution Center that the city of High Point has, and to the southwest is a warehouse belonging to Southeast Connections. The area plan of the southeast Forsyth County Area Plan recommends institutional district here, but this recommendation was made to acknowledge the former nursing care facility was at this site, the special land use condition area recommends an intensification from agricultural zoning, the proposed uses for this site is nursery, lawn and garden, supply store, retail and services B, so there's two uses that would be allowed here. With the watershed limiting the amount of development that can occur, shoot, my fault, with the watershed limiting the amount of development that can occur on the site, with the existing industrial uses that are to the south, staff believes the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area and recommends approval.
Are there any questions for staff? No one has signed up, is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F sixteen thirty five.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Next up is C two PBR twenty twenty three dash twenty two, the applicant is Termoto Properties LLC, this is an adult daycare and pedestrian business zoning district, it's a zero point five acres, southeast intersection of West Sixth Street and North Spring Street. So this building here was built in nineteen sixty two and exempt from parking requirements, this site meets the minimum UDO requirements for an adult daycare center and staff recommends approval.
Is there anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of F sixteen thirty six.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion?
If, if I could, we're on PBR twenty twenty three twenty two, I'm sorry.
That, uh, B eight.
What?
We're on C two.
B two. B eight was-
I apologize.
That's okay, because I was gonna say, we technically don't, it's not a public hearing and we don't need a-
Got it, got it, yep, yep, yep.
A, a comp plan.
I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Next up is D one subdivision number twenty twenty two one four eight, this is Jason Robbins subdivision, this is a withdrawal of a ten lot preliminary subdivision in an RS nine zoning district, this subdivision was approved last December, so last, exactly December the eighth, the last time we were here, it's three point two eight acres on the south side of Jason Lane with west of Robbins Road, so here's the subdivision, again, it was approved on December the eighth, the applicant would like to withdraw this subdivision, and so staff has no issues with this request.
I move that we grant the request to withdrawal.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion?
Has, has any work been done at all on the site?
Previous motion is second on the floor, any other discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
And next up is case D two, this is subdivision twenty twenty three one five six, subdivision's name is Swam Meadows, this is a thirty nine lot preliminary subdivision in RS nine zoning district, it's nineteen point seven four acres on the south side of Swam Road between Riley Forest Court and Cedar Ridge Lane. So this subdivision connects Gate House Manor, which is over here, to Swam Road by extending Latch Key Drive, which, can't see the name, but it's, it's right there, so they extend Latch Key Drive through here, it also connects to Cedar Ridge subdivision through Teaberry Lane, the stub to the south on Cedar Ridge subdivision is not viable, you can kind of see the topography, and of course, there's a really nice sized creek here. DOT is requesting fee and loo here on Swam Road because they want to do the entire Swam Road at one time and not have to piecemeal it, with that, staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Motion by Mr. Lamb.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, board will now go back to case-
B five.
B five.
B five, which is case W thirty six oh five, and we'll hear from Mr. Wilson, and we'll give the staff report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is case W three five zero six, the petitioner is the city of Winston Salem, so this is city owned property, this is a thirty one point six two acre site located on the north side of Motor Road between Old Walker Town Road and Circle Drive, the city is requesting a special use limited rezoning from a dual zone property, it's owned LI and RS nine to RM eighteen L. This is the legacy growth management map, there's a type on there, it does have a small portion of GMA two on the far western side, it's bordering on GMAs two and three, so urban and suburban neighborhoods in the growth management area plan. And this is the location map, you can see it's a pretty large area, let me grab my pointer here. So this is where the Dollar General is here, and of course, you've got the Motor Road extension here, Old Walker Town Road, this is Mount Pleasant Drive, and this is Bristol Street right here, just a, a small point, currently, there is no direct access to Bristol Street, so at this time, that, that's not part of, you know, a part of the consideration, this area here is the RS nine zoning here, so you can see it's surrounded on the northeastern side primarily by single family zoning with one MHS for some manufactured homes, and on the southern side by some, a mixture of land uses. This is the aerial image, you can see the site is almost entirely undeveloped with, again, that carve out for the Dollar General there, and there is a access easement for that drive there on the southern end, the remainder is heavily wooded and there's actually a sewer outfall running directly through the middle of the property there with a stream feature, that's called five mile branch. Some site photos taken at different times, this is looking northbound on Motor Road, you can see it has existing sidewalk, and right where that drive is in the background there, that's kind of where some single family homes are on this side of Motor Road. This is on the other end of the property, this is looking east at the intersection of Walker Town Road and Mount Pleasant Drive, so that's the kind of collector's street back there, and there is a church right across the street from the southern end. And again, this is looking east along Old Walker Town Road, that's where the sidewalk ends for the Dollar General. This is looking a little more interior around the other side, the eastern side of the site, this is looking north along Mount Pleasant Drive, you can see the single family homes there, and looking south along the same area. And this is the western terminus of Bristol Street, so again, this terminates into a private access drive and then the property is behind that. Last, I'll show you is looking south intersection of School Street, they call it School Street here, but it's Bristol, Bristol Drive on some of the dressing points, so sorry for any confusion there, Mount Pleasant Drive, and then switching right back to the, the other side, this is the drive entrance to the Dollar General, so just giving you a little more side information and last pick, I promise, looking north into the site from the Dollar General parking lot. So that, and this is the land use recommendation map from the northeast suburban area plan, which does recommend a mixture of uses in this area. In our analysis, staff found that the request is consistent with the area plan recommendation for mixed use development, as this would allow for multifamily, townhomes, duplexes, single family homes to be developed, the request would allow for the development property in the serviceable land area that lies along transportation facilities with excess capacity, so Motor Road and Old Walker Town Road do have plenty of capacity, and this request would allow for needed housing units near a variety of services, therefore, staff does recommend approval of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question, I remember hearing about this property over the years and plans for it in mixed use, but do you know where the, the limited industrial came from, what, with, how that, out here in the middle of residential and kind of rural?
I did not look into the far past history of when this was, came industrial property, I can imagine that there were designs when this was less developed for an industrial park, but it's been some time, certainly before the nineties.
And Mr. Fairby, I, my recollection, conversations with this when we were doing area plans in previous years is that this predated the UDO and that this was a conversion from the, the previous zoning ordinance, and again, I couldn't explain what situations led to the mapping of this as industrial, but it does predate any of the current development out there.
Okay, that makes sense.
Is it a staff led initiative or is it a, a collective body led initiative?
This is a request that came from the council member to, to rezon the property, to, again, to allow for residential development, which are the five uses that have been requested. Planning staff assisted the council member and her community assistance liaison with the neighborhood meeting and wrote the neighborhood meeting summary, but this is not a planning staff request, this is a city of Winston Salem request, so again, you know, we are analyzing it in the context of what the recommendations of the area plan are, and, you know, using planning principles, again, as, as Mr. Wilson indicated, it does comply, you know, it is in compliance in our thoughts with the area plan, and it is an area that is conveniently located to goods and services, so it certainly makes sense to downs on this property from industrial, which would potentially have negative impacts on those surrounding property owners, to allow for more compatible residential uses, I think you might hear from opposition that they don't necessarily agree with that, but that's the, that's the planning rationale behind that, to kind of piggyback on what Kirk was saying earlier, keep in mind that, you know, the way the old zoning ordinance worked before the UDO is it was kind of nested, and if you had the most intense zoning district, at that point, I one and I two, it allowed any use that was permitted in the less intense districts, so residential was allowed in the most intense districts that we had, you know, basic, when Haynes Mall was built, it was actually zoned I two, and so that's the way zoning did work, whenever, you know, this was probably zoned I one would be my guess, whenever the conversion was done in ninety four for the ninety five adoption, so they converted it from I one to LI, which is the light industrial, but I think it's been industrial since prior to the conversion.
Excuse me, any additional questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Wilson, so we will have a public hearing on this because we do have opposition, again, each side will have twelve minutes, I know we've heard from staff, is anyone here to speak on behalf of the city, because we normally go with proponents first? Nope, alright, if not, we will go to opposition, I think it's Hubert Allgood? If you would come up and state your name, address and zip code for the record, please.
I'm definitely opposed to this whole situation she's going through, nobody wants that many apartments.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
According to this-
Sir, I'm sorry, Mr. Allgood, Mr. Allgood, could you state your name and address and zip code?
There's thirty nine acres there.
I don't think if you can hear-
Thirty nine points, there's thirty nine and a half acres.
Sir, sir, can you state your name and address and zip code for the record?
Hubert Allgood, forty seven ninety nine Mount Pleasant Drive, Winston Salem, two seven one oh five.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, we, we can hear your case now.
Okay, I think this is a damn joke, but I'll go ahead. Ain't nobody in the neighborhood or anywhere else around there wants thirty nine apartments, they say according to what everybody's reading, there's supposed to be apartments for every acre, that's thirty nine over thirty nine acres, and that's just, is just unbelievable to any of us around there, and that's about all I can say, hey, tell you is, ain't nobody wants it.
Okay, is there anything else you would like for us to know?
Beg pardon?
Anything else you would like to say?
That's it.
Alright.
I just oppose it.
Okay.
All the way.
Understood.
I don't care, you put any kind of business in there you want to, it don't matter, you don't want apartments.
Okay.
Now.
Are there any questions for Mr. Allgood? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Eleven minutes.
We have eleven minutes left, is anyone here like to speak in opposition? Alright, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion, all those in favor sign of aye, aye opposed the same sign, that is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of W thirty six oh five, second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any- Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition? Nope. That passes unanimously. Thank you.
This item will be heard at the January eighth, twenty twenty-four City Council. Mr. Chairman, board, the next case that we will have will be case B eight, which is case F sixteen thirty-six. We'll hear from Nick Smith.
Good evening, members. Good evening, members of the planning board. It's great to see you. As Director Murphy mentioned, this is case F sixteen thirty-six. The petitioner is Ram Real Estate LLC. It is for a two point one-two acre site on the east side of Germanton Road between Irene Lane and Oak Trail Lane, and their request is for special use rezoning from RS thirty and RS forty to limited business special use. Again, as mentioned earlier, this is located up on Germanton Road, north of the Beltway in Growth Management Area Five, which corresponds to the rural areas of Forsyth County. The location map here shows that this property is currently surrounded by residential zoning and residential uses. The closest non-residential zoning district is roughly a quarter mile away, further to the north. And the eastern leg of the belt, of the northern Beltway, let me switch to laser pointer, this purple area right here represents the right of way for the, that eastern leg of the northern Beltway. There's an interchange right here with Germanton Road. The aerial image again does show that residential properties again surround the property, and there's no nearby commercial uses. The area plan, as you can see here, the Rural Hall Area Plan update does recommend single-family residential uses at a density of zero to eight dwelling units per acre. This red property is the one I mentioned earlier that is a, the closest to commercial use. It's roughly a quarter mile away. This red property does represent a special land use condition, that's that asterisks with an A. And just as a direct quote from the area plan, is recommended that these non-residential uses be prohibited from expanding, and it is a legally legally non-conforming gas station and service garage that was rezoned to bring it into compliance. It was a non-conforming structure that we rezoned, or helped them with a rezoning to bring it into compliance with the code. And now we're on to site photos. This is looking south, across, and north on Germanton Road. The subject property is this grassy field to the right of this picture and to the left of this picture. This is looking, sorry, this is looking east into the subject property. You can see it's been graded and cleared for development of some sort. And this is looking northeast and east at the neighboring residential properties. This gravel road right here is the, the right of way that is Irene Lane. I will say, almost busted a tire driving down Irene Lane to get there, so it's an interesting road. This is the site plan for the development. It is a, proposed to be a retail store right here with parking along here and here. They are proposing a widening and improvement of Irene Lane right here to the north of the site. It's supposed to be widened and upgraded into fifty-foot public right of way. A type-two buffer yard is required along the eastern and southern property lines, and street yards are required along the western and northern property lines. A cross-ass, sorry, a cross-access connection is being provided to the south for any potential commercial uses further to the south. Stormwater will be collected off-site right here on a parcel that is owned by the same owners of this property. So it's owned by the same, and you can see the stormwater pipe pulling everything to this off-site stormwater device. As a part of this, we also included a condition that the developer is allowed to have one freestanding sign along Germanton Road. It's going to be a maximum of six feet tall and a maximum area of thirty-six square feet, and electronic message boards are not going to be permitted as part of that condition. These are the elevations proposed for the Dollar General. Kind of just to show what the different gradient materials are, this darker material on the bottom is going to be brick veneer. This middle horizontal siding is going to be hardy plank, and the upper vertical boards are going to be hardy board planks. So all of that does meet the use-specific conditions for the retail store use. We, staff also has added, has requested and received permission from the developer and the owner for a additional condition as part of the rezoning of the property for the elevations. It's for screening of any rooftop mechanical equipment, as well as any mechanical equipment on site, because we noticed earlier this week that just based on the elevations, you can see, especially on the south-facing one right here, you can just see the rooftop equipment kind of peeking out. So we wanted to add that, and the owners were amenable to that. So in summary, the request is inconsistent with the recommendations of the Rural Hall Area Plan and Legacy twenty thirty. The request is not within the serviceable land area of Forsyth County. It is north of the Beltway, so very, or far from the serviceable area. No commercial zoning, like I mentioned earlier, is located within a quarter mile of the subject property, and what is located there is, was a non-conforming use that we worked to bring into compliance. And just in conclusion, the request does allow suburban development patterns to encroach into the rural area of Forsyth County. So in summary, zoning or planning staff does recommend denial of the request, and the site plan does meet all UDO requirements, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have just a question for you. For the off-site stormwater, is there a particular type of easement or conditions required for that?
I'm not.
No, I mean, obviously, they have to go through the, you know, since this is located within Forsyth County, they would have to go through the state for their approvals. I'm assuming, again, it's an assumption, it's not anything that's handled in-house, but as part of that, I'm assuming there would be, just like within the city, there would be contractual maintenance agreements, those kind of things they'd have to enter into. So again, I'm assuming, and perhaps the developer can answer that question whenever they get up to speak in a couple of minutes, but there's not anything, there's no hook in our local ordinance. I mean, the ordinance does allow for off-site stormwater management, but, you know, through their state permit, I'm assuming that there is a hook there as far as they're permitting, that they would have some easements and maintenance accommodations.
Nothing in our zoning that would require it to be included.
No, and again, you know, again, I think the developer can, can speak to this, you know, this is part of an overall development they are looking to do. You notice they're upgrading Irene to public street standards. It's my understanding that, at least at one point, they were looking to do a PRD behind this that will also, you know, will be part of their development. So again, as part of that, you know, there may be some shifting of some lots, there may be some re combinations, who exactly knows, but they would also be controlling this development behind it as well.
So it, it looked like one of the biggest issues in the inconsistency with it was just the size of it, the ten thousand square foot versus the five thousand?
Yes, ma'am. So the zoning district that would generally be something for something like this would be our neighborhood business zoning district. It's appropriate, as the name implies, to be next to neighborhoods, and there is a five thousand square foot required, or maximum square footage requirement for those, for buildings in that district, so.
I think the other challenge, just to further kind of dig into what Mr. Smith was saying, is that even if neighborhood business was requested, that district is usually found more at crossroads-type situations where you have thoroughfares or collectors, and this is in the middle of a residential, almost exclusively residential stretch, again, in Growth Management Area Five. So that's kind of where staff's main concerns were based on.
If, if I could also expound upon that a little bit, because again, you know, I think from a staff perspective, we also have to acknowledge that, you know, moving forward, that this is a, a changing area. Just to the south of this is a interchange with what will eventually be signed as I seventy-four, but part of the Beltway, I think it's seventy-four, it's not seventy-three, is it? Okay, seventy-four. You know, so again, you know, I think acknowledging that, you know, this is currently located within GMA five, I think, you know, obviously, we are in the middle of doing our comprehensive plan for twenty forty-five. Part of that's going to be examining future growth management changes in light of changing circumstances. The Beltway obviously will have a key impact on that, but it's our thought that it's premature to, at this point, move the needle to say that it's okay to do commercial development here. Coming out of that plan, it very well may be that this is identified as an area for a commercial node, given the location and proximity to the Beltway. But of course, you know, that deals with sewer basin expansions. That deals with lots of other growth implications that we are still in the middle of working with Winston-Salem-Forsyth County Utilities on, with the planning board, with the citizens. So in our opinion, it's premature. I'm not saying that there isn't pressure there, especially as the Beltway continues to open up, but we would prefer to look at it more comprehensively through recommendations than do kind of one-offs. Again, this isn't anything we haven't told the petitioner, but again, just like anything else, if someone wants to go forward, we're going to help folks through the process, and we're going to put forward the best recommendation we can if it were to get approved, which is why we have, you know, conditions related to cross-access, you know, conditions related to the screening and those kind of things. If this were to get approved, we want to make sure it's going to be an asset for the community. It's just from a planning perspective, we think it's premature at this point, but the planning board and the elected officials may feel different.
How far away is it actually from the on-ramp to?
Less than a quarter mile.
Less than a quarter mile. How long is it going to be before you come up with your plan?
Our hope is, our hope is to have the comprehensive plan adopted by this time next year.
Okay, but University Parkway and this right here, you know, those two intersections, I mean.
Well, you know, of course, you know, that's just setting the big stage, then we have to do the, the respective area plans that fall underneath them. So again, I think, you know, we, we haven't come up with an implementation plan, we haven't come up with anything, you know, obviously, we're still working on the comp plan. I think our thought process would be that, you know, probably given kind of where we are, the changing dynamics and patterns of the northeast area with the Beltway, I would think that would be the area that we'd probably look to start our next phase of the area plans moving forward. But I think our area plans are going to be, just as the comp plan's being reimagined, I think the area plans are going to be reimagined, they're going to be much simpler and really focus on land use. We have other guiding documents that deal with greenways. We have other guiding documents that deal with transportation improvements. We have, you know, the overall comprehensive plan, which sets the large phase. I think we want to move more towards just a land use plan for these smaller areas. So hopefully, that will come quicker. But again, I say all that to say that, I mean, this time next year, we're not going to have parcel-specific recommendations for this area.
Was there an aerial in this? I wanted to, so I'm just thinking, you know, from an assemblage standpoint, you've got a lot of wide open, I just, I would hurry.
You know, I'm not disagreeing with you, but obviously, you know, we can't, we can't start one thing before we have, we can't do detail until we have general, and we, you know, we're still working on general, so.
There was some discussion earlier of neighborhood business zoning. In looking at a site for neighborhood zoning, is there any kind of definition on neighborhood? Because to me, the density here is so low that I'm not even sure I would call that a neighborhood. I mean, and I don't mean that as an insult, I mean that as a compliment, really. I mean, there's, there's a lot of undeveloped land there, and the, the density is so low that I don't even know how you'd say it's a neighborhood business.
The purpose statement for the district does talk about kind of the conditions for, that would be appropriate for that type of zoning, and the district does kind of recognize that in rural areas, NB zoning really is for those kind of intermittent crossroads-type, where you've got a, you know, a convenience store that serves as kind of a country store or things of that nature that you might see. And you're absolutely right, that this area doesn't really meet the urban or even suburban definition of neighborhood. And again, there's, there is development potential here, and just to piggyback on what Chris said, I think we just were concerned that this might be premature before there's any public policy documents in place that have had wider community input.
Thank you.
How far away is sewer? I mean, it's GMA five, but how far away is it?
I would hate to speculate, and again, someone may be able to pull it up. It's definitely, it's definitely on the south side of the Beltway. That's part of, that's part of an ongoing discussion that we're having with Forsyth County, community development with utilities, ourselves, and Greater Winston-Salem. You know, the city, sorry, the county received twenty million dollars to do sewer expansions targeted in southeast Forsyth County, but part of an overarching and larger goal is, you know, again, is to look at other areas where we can strategically extend water and sewer. Obviously, along the Beltway is part of that, but, you know, we also have to be careful because, again, we don't want to go too far afield north of the, north of the Beltway and get into the GMA five area that drains to a different basin. So again, we have to be careful in how we do that. So again, it's probably, it's on the south side of the Beltway, but I'm not sure how close. Brian is trying to look that up currently.
I remember from a separate rezoning, it's right there on Old Hollow Road. It's right there where you see that, that red kind of in there in the bottom corner. We had a rezoning, just the one just north of where he's at in that point where he was, but.
Same.
Right in that area.
But the issue is ridgeline. So again, if, in order to sewer this, you've got to pump back over. So again, it's, it's, you know, it's not as simple as saying, well, it's just a simple extension because it's, it's in a different basin.
Yeah.
Again, that was a good conversation, kind of lengthy on our part, but just wanted to kind of provide a little bit of context as to kind of what our thought process was, but also recognizing it is a changing area.
It's about a mile, mile and a half north of Haynes Brand's HQ and that golf course over there, right?
Correct.
Any additional questions for staff? All right, then we will go into the public hearing. Again, each side will have twelve minutes. We do have proponents, Daniel Almazan or? Am I close? Or Almazan, and also Justin Church. If you state your name, address, and zip code for the record.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Almazan with Terramore Development. Yeah, close to Amazon, but Almazan. So, well, actually, if, if you don't mind, while I'm doing my, my spill, can you hand this out, just so that they kind of get an idea of what's being proposed? So thanks, Nick, for, for the discussion and the, and the summary. So one of the things that I kind of want to preemptively talk about is, obviously, this does not meet the comprehensive plan. It was not, it was not even thought of or identified within, I believe it was two thousand thirteen, whenever that was, that was developed, so ten years ago, that they didn't even contemplate that there would be a bypass through there. And, and so I think that would be consistent, that, that they would not have anticipated that there should be any commercial out there. And just to kind of give you an idea, from the bypass to this property is about eight hundred feet. The property south of us, if you, let me see, if you see the parcels below us.
Can you give them?
There's a difference, but you know what, I can probably slide, okay, here, I'm going to use that one right there. So if we look at, originally, what we tried to do was, we did try to do this as a PRD because it was ironic that we, we were just talking about the, the previous application with the city rezoning that property. Obviously, that was a Dollar General, and, and we did that project. The, the property behind it made sense that you would have a residential property and, and kind of a corner store, if you will. What I passed out, because this is a DG Fresh concept, where that it has fresh fruits and vegetables and, and different food options, because basically, we've got kind of a food desert out there, not a lot of shopping options, especially if it's for groceries, and as the area is continuing to grow, there's going to be need for that and, and limited business specifically for this, and trying to limit it because luckily, we don't need sewer out there. We don't need those kind of services, we can work off as a septic, and Justin will talk a little bit about what we're doing with the, with the storm drain. But the property behind it, we had originally anticipated in, in showing that as a development with, with housing, a new housing development behind it, but staff recommended that we, we localize and be specific about just this project, so that's all we're presenting today. Like, in terms of, of the rest of the project, this is about a one, one point eight million dollar project. It, it'll generate about a million and a half in annual revenues and tax base. We, we do have water available, and so we will be utilizing the, the water utilities. One of the things that we had earlier this year was we had, we had presented to the community more of a comprehensive plan in terms of not just the Dollar General that we were proposing, but with some of the residential. And we were, we were fortunate that we actually had a lot of support for the Dollar General being out there because of the lack of shopping, yeah, just because they had to go all the way in town. And, and as we see, even with, with the potential of having housing behind us, about the major concern that we have. concern that we had about was just, there's a site distance to, to the ridge over on Germanton Road. There was a little bit of a concern, and we, we discussed with, with NC DOT, and I think if you show on our site plan, we do, we do have a turn lane on Germanton Road to kind of facilitate that. Let's see, oh, no, that's okay. Yeah, just keep going. Okay, well, yeah. Actually, it doesn't show up well on this, but if you look in the, in the upper left-hand corner, you see that we've got a turn lane in addition to the improvements made to Irene Lane. And so, so that I don't use up all of our time, there may be other questions for Justin, but while I'm here, if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to answer.
This new concept, the DG Fresh, says 10,000 square foot stormwater.
Correct.
How does that compare to like an average Dollar General?
The typical Dollar Generals are 9,100 square feet, so you're getting about 1,500 more square feet, so you get a little bit more of an all these kind of vibe, where that you've got some fresh fruits and vegetable options, but of course, you've got the regular merchandise and options that you, you would have at a normal Dollar General.
Okay. Any additional questions? All right, thank you.
I have a question. In terms of your model of, do you think the population there as it is now is sufficient?
Yes, but, well, there's a couple of things. We've, because there, the general area is about two-mile radius for this, so there actually are a lot of houses whenever, even though it's rural, through that area, as well as this is, this is now especially a collector because we've got the bypass there, and so there's sufficient traffic already on Germanton Road that, that it appeals to Dollar General, and they feel like it would be a really compliment to the, to the area.
So this would be to serve the existing, not planning on future?
Yeah, it's, it's not reliant on, on future housing, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
How much time is left?
Seven and a half minutes.
Great.
Good evening, my name is Justin Church with Blue Ridge Fire Mill, we're the civil engineers for the project. Address is 1520 Meadowview Drive in Wilkesboro, North Carolina. And I don't have a lot to add to what?
Zip code, please, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, 28697.
Thank you.
I don't have much to add to what the planning and Daniel has already covered. Like I said, we, planning staff was very helpful in helping us to sort of develop, there's a little bit of, Irene Lane is kind of an odd situation there, so they were very helpful with us in sort of hashing out the best way to present this. And so, and as far as the stormwater questions, yes, our stormwater would be off-site, we would permit that through NC DEQ, and they do have, as you say, hooks, there are maintenance requirements that would go along with any approval they would have, so certainly would, there would be instruments to maintain that stormwater feature in perpetuity. So other than that, happy to answer any questions you have specific to the site plan.
Do you have a question? I mean, since, did you, how did you size that stormwater?
Honestly, what you're seeing there is just, it's not rigidly sized yet.
Okay, got it.
Again, it's, it's kind of a placeholder for now, but.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a question for staff, was there any neighborhood outreach? Have we heard anything from anyone in the neighborhood?
They did conduct, they did conduct, gosh, conduct their neighborhood outreach, but we have not heard any opposition from anyone to date.
All right, is there anyone else here to speak in favor? All right, any opposition? All right, seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure of the board? Discussion, anyone ready for a motion?
It's so difficult for me to wait on plans, you know, to halt a project based on, we're working on plans. I understand it, I mean, I understand that there's a tremendous amount of work that needs to be put in to come up with good plans for those areas, but that's my, that's my, you know, biggest challenge, is holding up something for that.
I think the, like, future utilities and access and what you do, having to rely on non-public utilities is going to limit what can be done to some extent. So to me, that kind of counterbalances, we put something here, all these things are going to come, because they're going to be limited by what is going to fit with the available, you know, septic and water.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Right. So until that changes, only so much is going to go there.
Yeah, yeah. And I think from a planning standpoint, it's terrible to have these little spot, you know, two and three acre parcels and destroy your ability to assemble and end up with a bunch of RM18, you know, you're going to deny a lot of more dense housing. But anyway, I hate delaying development because of lack of planning, or because there's not enough time for planning.
Yeah, I don't like to put the cart before the horse, but like you can, we can compare this to, we talked about university with the new Beltway. However, university's been commercial, or commercial-esque, there already is the infrastructure, and then you have this kind of country rural road, but it's right adjacent, the Beltway, you know, on and off ramp, and I mean, from the pictures, you can see the ramp right there. So this, to me, seems a little different. Now granted, it is not comply with, consistent with the area plan, with the comp plan, we clearly know that, but given those conditions, I'm not, I don't feel as obligated to wait for the planning to happen for this type of project, given those conditions exist. And I mean, that's not going to change next year when we had a comp plan, and then if you do the, the area plan, all that, and like you said, it's not like everybody's going to have to, going to clamor to come here because there aren't utilities anyway. It's a little different.
You know, we had a case a few months ago, not far at all from here, where it was apartments going behind the Walmart, and I kind of lectured all the folks that were here, opposing that they're going to have to get their minds around the idea that this part of Forsyth County is in the midst of some change. To me, though, this, this is a far cry from apartments adjacent to a Walmart. And if, if we were Davidson County, if we were Iredale County, where we got a relatively low population relative to the amount of undeveloped land we had, I might feel differently, but we have so little of it left. And between the need to try to preserve some of it and the need to allow for better development, to your point Clarence, where you've got a better plan, maybe served by better utilities that you could do more instead of chopping it up and doing a little piece here and a little piece there, to me, I just, I really, it's not consistent with the plan, and it, I just, it doesn't feel like it's a great sort of thing to stick there, not knowing what's coming down the road. And I, I'm like you Clarence, I, I hate to put the brakes on development and certainly understand that, that creates a problem, but I just, this is, this is really, and I know where the Beltway is, but this is really rural still. I mean, there, there was nobody in opposition at the community meeting level because nobody lives there. I mean, the trees don't get a vote, so.
All right, well, we've had both sides speaking, and so I guess now we need to take a motion, if anyone is ready to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the planning board find the request is inconsistent with the comp plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye. And Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend denial of F-1636.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same side?
Aye.
So was that five to two?
Two.
Okay.
I absolutely understand.
I might vote completely differently in a year and a half.
Yeah. Yeah, almost.
Mr. Chairman, the board will now move on to item B9 on your agenda, which is UDO CC25, and we'll hear from Steve Smotherman.
Good evening, board members. I'm going to present briefly the essence of UDO CC25, which is a staff proposing the text amendment to do three things. One, to increase the maximum number of attached units within one building within the residential multifamily five zoning district, to increase the maximum building height that's allowed in the RM8, RM12, and RM18 multifamily districts, and to revise the thresholds, the threshold for which buffer yard standards become required. The amendment is intended to reduce rezoning requests to higher-density multifamily districts by allowing more design flexibility in lower-density multifamily districts. There have been, I mean, I might add, there's been in the past couple of years about six rezonings that has either dealt with needing higher building heights or more unit, more units per building that have been recommended by the, by this board. The purpose is to enable multifamily developments to meet maximum zoning density while accommodating site constraints such as creeks and floodplains, steeper slopes, stormwater improvements. The amendment increases the, specifically increases the maximum number of attached units per building from four units to six units. Amendment also increases the maximum height in three multifamily districts, in RM8 from 40 feet to 48 feet, or approximately four stories, in the RM12 district from 45 to 60 feet, or approximately five stories, and in the RM18 district from 60 to 72 feet, or approximately six stories. The amendment stipulates that new structures in the RM8, RM12, and RM18 districts that are going to be greater than 40 feet in height must be set back a minimum of 50 feet from adjacent properties zoned for single-family uses. However, parking may be located within that 50-foot setback provided it is outside of any required buffer yard. Amendment also revises the buffer yard requirement from applying to multifamily or town home developments, and moves it from any development of five units or more to developments that are greater than one acre in size. So in sum, we think this amendment will right-size dimensional standards for multifamily districts to accommodate properties that have site constraints. It should reduce some of the rezoning requests while maintaining compatibility with adjacent single-family homes, and it allows for greater ability to utilize existing multifamily sites since most of them these days do have some sort of site constraint. And with that, the staff recommends approval of this amendment, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
I have one question, I couldn't remember, the 50-foot buffer yard increase, how much of an increase was that over the existing setback, not buffer yard setback?
You're talking about the setback?
Right.
Well, that's something that's not required in all of those districts currently. Steve, I believe, is it, is a 50-foot required, or is it a 40 in one of the?
I don't, in the RM8?
In the RM8, but in the other, the more intense districts, that's not required currently, but staff felt that that would be an appropriate trade-off to allow that additional story of height than we're allowing, and, exactly.
But it's only for the additional setback, it's not, if, if, if you're coming in under what that new requirement is, you, you're, you're allowed to develop just as you are today.
If you're less, 40 feet or less, you can, you don't have to be setback 50 feet.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you so very much. No one has signed up in opposition, is anyone here opposed to this request? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed, what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning board find the request is consistent with a comprehensive plan.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same side? That is unanimous?
Mr. Chairman, I further move the planning board recommend approval of UDO CC25.
Motion by Mr. Lamb?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grubbs, any discussion? All those in favor, sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same side? That is unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that brings us to the conclusion of the, of today's agenda except for staff report. I am correct, correct? Just making sure. So the first thing I'll do is I will turn to Brian to give a preview of the January 24 case load that we have, which is actually good news.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll be happy to tell you that we only have five total items in January, three of them are the continued cases from today. We do have one new rezoning request, it's a general use request, and then one new planning board review for a PRD that, they're actually coming and changing a PRD that you've seen before out on the western end of the county. And so with that, I do certainly wish everyone here a very happy and safe holidays.
Thank you. All right, I do have two other things, just a, a quick update, just wanted to bring to your attention that the, the city, of course, you know, we are a city-county department, but we're housed in the city for personnel purposes. We had our employee excellent awards ceremony earlier this week on Tuesday. We did have three staff members who were nominated for citywide awards. Isaac Howard in our permit office was nominated under the Rising Star provision, which is someone who has been with the city less than two years, who exemplifies all the qualities that we want in an employee. We also had Carly Everhart, who is one of our GIS project planners, he was nominated for the Team Player Award. And then finally, Yolanda Price, who is our permit office supervisor, was nominated under the Supervisor of the Year category and won. So Yolanda Price on our staff is the city's Supervisor of the Year and was recognized at the event on Tuesday, so I wanted to make sure I pointed that out to the planning board, that's certainly a great honor. The last thing that I want to do is just recognize Sarah Keely on our staff who is here, she is a project planner, she is our environmental planner, comes to us with an undergrad from Appalachian and unfortunately, a master's degree from Duke. But anyway, you got, you got to get those licks in when you can, but she's been with us a number of months, she's actually done a lot of work on the comprehensive plan and is, has done a lot of work in kind of taking that data and analyzing the results. So you'll continue to see Sarah a lot moving forward, but she hasn't been able to make it to previous meetings that we've had, so I want to make sure I recognized her. Final thing is, I do just want to wish everyone happy holidays. Appreciate, again, appreciate all of the work that, that y'all bring to assist us in putting together a great community, and again, just thank you for, for that.
All right. Councilmember Sippy, again, good to see you, happy holidays to you and other guests that joined us and stayed for the entire meeting, thank you. To planning board staff, thank you, and I did get a chance to go through Whoville and congratulate the employee, the supervisor. If you're not seeing Whoville, you need to go through Whoville, it's pretty impressive. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
I'll, I'll leave out the Grinch reference, just say a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned.
Well, I am the Grinch, so no offense taken.